So much to see and do in Grants. Parks provide relaxation for picnics and athletic events. Creative activities abound at the senior citizen center. The new animal shelter is a state-of-the-art facility for our lost pets. Grants is home to the Mount Taylor Quad, Fire Nice Bike Rally, Fourth of July Rodeo, and so much more. Grants, the gateway to outdoor adventures, sightseeing, hunting, hiking, biking, and riding. Grants, where ancient and modern civilizations meet. Grants, a great place to live.
Before we start this meeting tonight, there's somebody in the audience that would like to offer a prayer. How about you, Les? Thank you very much.
Most gracious, Heavenly Father, we do thank you today. We thank you for your love, and we thank you for each one that's in mission in the Lord. But right now, we just pray that you would anoint the city in each decision that is made here tonight. We pray for our veterans as they've served our country. We pray for the people active in duty today. We pray for our first responders and for the police. Please, Lord, we just thank you and give you the praise in the name of Christ. Amen.
Roll call. A real way will call me in order 6:02 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hicks.
Here.
Council Lewis.
Here.
Council Lucero.
Good.
Council Bystate.
Here.
And Council Reynolds.
Here.
Please stand and join me in my question. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hold on. Approval of the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve it as written.
Second.
On number three, the date needs to be August 29th.
As long as it's on the...
It's correct in your packet.
It's correct in the packet, we're all right. Okay, second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Wuskas?
Yes.
Council Lewis?
Yes.
Citizens, to address this council, there's one, two, three, four, five of you. Let's start with Sarah Austin.
I'm here to discuss the importance of continuing to provide transportation in our area. I have made attempts to be placed on the agenda for these meetings so that I can meet the deadline with the state for fiscal year '19. I have several passengers with us. They're wanting to speak as well tonight, and our employees. From January to August, we've done over 4,000 trips. 282 of those were for work. We take a lot of people, almost 1,000 trips a month, and transportation is important to our community, and it wouldn't work out if we don't have the support from all three entities. So I'm coming to ask that I be placed on your next agenda so that we can discuss transportation.
Anybody else?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Blanca Main, blank, is that right? This name? Blanca? Blanca Main.
I am concerned about transportation. I use it, I depend of this, of this, for appointments, and I'm a mother of three kids. I am proud of my kids, and I know Medicare has transportation also, but they won't let me take any of my kids with me. They won't allow anyone under the age of 18. My husband is about to leave. He's in the Army. He's about to leave for a year. If you guys, if you take this transportation, what I'm gonna do? How I'm gonna get to my appointments? How I'm gonna get to my car? How I'm gonna go and buy food for my kids? So she asked us, all of you like to get in your cars and go to places because you have independence? Car Express is the only thing I have the closest of independence that I have. I can't go without begging people to take me. I can go by my own. So just, if you take this from us, it's gonna be a mistake. I know you don't believe it's not a need, but it's a huge need, and you need to be in our shoes to understand how bad it will affect us if you take this from us. Thank you.
Ben?
Yeah, well, as you pretty much said, what I was gonna say, being that I'm gonna be away, I don't know what you guys think is important in this town, but I think you need to take a good, hard look at those who need our help to get out of the house. All right? If you take for granted your ability to walk out of your front door and go more than a mile from your house, and you can't approve a part of the budget for this town, then perhaps we need to take a look, a good, hard look, at who is managing the budget for this town.
Is funding in jeopardy?
Lighty Billington? With the county, it is. I mean, we can't pick up the county sheriff. So...
Yeah, I don't know anybody on the council here who doesn't support the Carrot Express.
That's it. I mean, that's, that's what... Lighty Billington, is it? Did I get it right?
I'm Lydia.
Lydia, sorry about that. I'm butchering these names tonight.
I'm also here to talk about the Carrot Express. This is my daughter, and we will rely on the Carrot Express to get her to school every day and get me to work every day. I'm actually currently working at the Grants Animal Shelter, so we just came to show our support for the Carrot Express because I know it's not just important to me, but important to a lot of people, and I hope that it continues to be funded because I don't know what we would do without it.
Thank you. Paul?
Welcome back again.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Manager. Tonight, I'm here to talk as a citizen of the city of Grants and in support of the transit as well. The transit is, I think, a vital service for the city of Grants, Village of Milan, and Sebelah County as well, but by far, the city of Grants is the biggest beneficiary. They haul people to grocery stores here in Grants, Walmart here in Grants, doctors here in Grants, and there's a wide variety of people, as you see, that depend on this, not only the elderly, but also young people, people who are single parent families that may only have one vehicle. If that vehicle breaks down, this gives them an opportunity to get to work. They can get their kids to school riding the school bus, but they can't get to work. So we do have people going to work as well. It also provides the ability for some of our senior citizens in town to be able to stay here longer than they otherwise would. Other than that, they would have to go to Albuquerque or some other community that provides this type of service to get them around, especially if they don't have family in the area and that type of thing. So I think it's, I think the cost of it is very minimal compared to the benefit that we get in the area, and Sarah has been working hard to find new and better ways to improve the service and to try and supplement some of the costs of the service as well. I believe, you know, the Village of Milan, we're having our financial trials the same as the county is, but we will continue to support the transit. I believe the county has also said that they will continue to support it. The cost of it is really not that great for the benefit that it gives, and being some of the things that the city of Grants wants to do, promoting retirement in the community, I think this is a service that will be needed to take these elderly people to medical services, and it also helps support our hospital, and also Grants being a gateway for the Continental Divide Trail. These hikers that come into town, it's a great benefit for them to use this service to get around to the post office, grocery store, and different businesses here in town that they need services for. So I wanted to bring that to the council and ask that you bring it on to the agenda and put it on the agenda and either vote in favor of it or vote against it, but...
Here's why it hasn't hit the agenda yet, is because we're waiting to see what the county does, Paul. The same reason we didn't give raises in this city, is we're waiting to see what the county does, Paul.
Well, I think...
We cannot pick up all the county's deals.
Well, I don't think we're asking you to.
Well, like I said, we'll see what the county does. If the county funds it... There's no one sitting up here that is against the Carrot Express, guys. No one up here is against it.
Well, I think this is, this is...
Hey, let's make that perfectly clear.
I don't think you have to wait for the county to...
But we gotta wait for the county to...
I don't think you have to, because if you decide to fund your portion and they don't support it, and we can't pick it up, the city can't pick it up, or decides they don't want to pick up that, the Village of Milan can't pick it up, then it can't be funded and it goes away. So you don't have to wait for their decision.
The county's coming up this week, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, I spoke to Sherri Taylor today.
Okay.
And as soon as the county makes their decision... It'll be on our next agenda, Paul.
Okay.
It'll be on our next agenda, but it's like I said, I mean, we can't and we won't. I mean...
Well, no, and nobody's asking.
Yeah, and I understand that. I just wanted everybody out there to understand that, okay?
I mean, if you don't...
We're not against the Carrot Express. Are you against the Carrot Express? Are you against the Carrot Express? Mike, are you against it? Are you against it?
No.
No, guys, nobody... And I might not even get a vote, so there it is.
And there may be, there may be, if the county decides not to support it, then maybe we can sit down and talk about how Grants and Milan can support it.
We can talk about something.
And maybe, you know, I mean, we'll make sacrifices to kick in some more into it, you know, and because I just think it's that important. I think it's one of those services that I expect my government to provide because it's a necessity, really.
The only problem that I had with the Carrot Express, Sarah, where are you? Are these rides to the Ice Capes and to Elmore Monument? And we sit out there and we wait for them people at 50 cents a head.
We're working on that.
Okay, that don't happen.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're discussing, we're discussing...
Okay, that's a no-no. I mean, that's a thing.
We're discussing a new rate, a new rate of structure for it, so that if we do services like that, then we charge a fee that, you know, will pay for the expense of doing that because that's completely different than what we're providing for our local citizens.
You bet, citizens.
And I totally agree with you on that, Paulie.
You bet.
So, I mean, some of those issues, we can overcome those issues.
Got it.
But we'd like to, you know, continue with the service, you know, for our citizens in the area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anybody else out there wanna talk about it? I would suggest you all be at the county meeting, because it's coming, okay? Appointments to committees, that's just a discussion item for tonight, guys. We'll go ahead and move on to our next meeting.
No, this one there, you got the names.
Did they give the names?
You can mark on number one. Yeah, number one is, a notice went out of the names for the employee committee that would help us work on our policies. Our staff has begun working on those, but we're supposed to, based on our former or our current policy, we're supposed to have staff participation. So we had some individuals that had been members prior. We added a few more to have the number we're supposed to have, and we're asking for your appointment.
And you guys all got this right in your emails?
Yes.
So you all got notice, right? I'll go take a motion if nobody's got a problem. Or if you guys wanna add somebody that I don't have on there or anything like that, I'm yanking, guys. Yanking whatever. But if not, I'll take those ones right there, please, and I'll entertain a motion as such.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the names submitted, be added to this committee.
Second.
Second.
Okay, for the record, those names are Non-Supervisor Monica Bali, Steve Abada, Eric Chavis, Amida Ford, and Management, our Chief of Police Marty Behill, Michelle Mace over at Futures with the Recreation Department, and Melissa Lopez from the Water Department, for the record. Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Ray. Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Next. Public comment and discussion on our charter compliance? Anybody in the audience who would like to discuss our charter compliance? Anybody up here?
Not today.
Not today? Approval of regular city council meeting minutes. Anybody see any corrections? From August 21st? I didn't, I'll entertain a motion.
I think a motion is approved.
Second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Wuskas?
Yes.
Council Lucero?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Special city council meeting from the 29th? Approval of the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the minutes from August 29th meeting.
Second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Next one. Oh, this is a good one. George Hannish, Ridge replacement. Step up. Smile. Ain't that bad? Good dick.
I was gonna say you're honored, but ever.
I told you to start that. Oh, thanks. See you around.
Thank you.
We'll see you later.
I was hoping to stick around for questions. Anyway, we had the pre-bid conference two weeks ago, and we had seven construction companies show up, but we only received four bids. We opened the bids this afternoon at 1:50, and we have Robert and Claudia from Wilson and Company to provide you the details.
Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and City Council. In front of you, you have a package with all of the information that we compiled from today's big openings. As Don said, there was four bidders. The apparent low bidder is Compass Engineering and Construction Services LLC. That was very close to the engineer's estimate, and so in the backup documentation, you will find the bid tab from all the four bidders. You'll also find the insurance compliance, making sure their license is up to par, and that they are in the pre-qualified and MDLT dequalification list. Any questions or...
And we're recommending Compass Engineering.
That is correct.
You guys worked with Compass before?
We have, I personally have you to relatively...
These guys are brand new, but one of them is from G. Sanderwald. They did us on First Street. And one of the things that I definitely want to see here is that they are held to the buyer on this $1,000 bid date damages because they were way behind schedule last time over here. But this guy broke away from G. Sanderwald and started his own company, so we may not have that follow-up.
Yeah, actually, we discussed that earlier, and there are some details in the contract that...
Yeah, that's what I... So I want to make sure that we hold these guys, speak to the buyer. I want it done on time, and every day that they're late on anything, we get that $1,000 from them, period.
And then it's, we put it in the contract, we're into $1,000 plus additional engineering and inspection cost.
I won't worry about the engineering costs. You guys worry about that. I'll worry about the $1,000, okay?
It affects everybody when a contractor is...
That'll work.
Yeah.
But after speaking with Mario and Robert, I agree that we should go with Compass, guys.
Is it a 90-day project?
120.
It's on 120 calendar days. I'm on track.
120.
But that, I mean, it's right in the middle of winter, so...
Yeah, that's why we hold their feet to the buyer, okay? It's 120 days. I don't care if it's December or July. When they sign the contract, it's a contract, they're blinded by it, and there's a way to do this. There's a way to cover the concrete and all that good stuff. There's no excuse for it, so... And I'll... Any questions? Other than mine, guys? I'll shut up now. Sorry.
So we'll start it in early October. That's when the project will start, in early October. They're gonna start demolishing the road and the bridge tomorrow, I believe, the city road.
The city, the city's portion of demolition.
Yeah.
The, you know, if it's approved, we'll issue the notice, you're seen, and the contractor has 10 days to get all the paperwork necessary to be getting, so within 10 days.
It just has to be done by October.
Don't freak out, Chris, it'll be on schedule. Any, yes, any other questions? Sidney? Manny? Rick? Mike? I'll entertain a motion, guys.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve concrete, or the contract for the concrete box culvert with Compass Engineering and Construction Services in the amount of $636,731.91.
Second.
Second.
Council Reynolds?
Yes.
Council Wuskas?
Yes.
Council Lewis?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Lighty, that resolution, you're still up there, Don?
Yes.
I guess you're up there for a little bit, so you haven't joked along.
Yeah.
Okay. How about it?
Okay, in further case of resolution, requesting attention on COOP project SP 617176, that's the state number. This is the First Street, Phase Three, due to the plume. We're all aware of that. You guys are probably more aware of that than I am, so you, but it's caused some issues, and they're currently getting some samples that could, you know, once we get the okay, we're gonna, we're trying to find out how deep, if we're okay, you know, how deep we can go that we could complete the project, or if we might have to just do like a chip and seal in that area or something, something more simple rather than doing all the infrastructure. So we're waiting on the sound piece for that.
So we're, the state, we're looking to go down 18 inches, leaving everything underneath, and widening the road to match all the rest of it, all the way down electrical? Is that what we're talking about here?
Yes.
Is the 18 inches widening? That's what we're waiting for?
Right.
Okay, 'cause, I mean, the betting, unless in the ground, guys, that ain't gonna happen until it's completely mitigated.
And this was set to expire on December.
Yes.
Okay, so we need to...
Okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page. Questions?
I just have, I just have one comment, a typo on the body of the letter, line four, middle. The design for the project is, has not been started. Is, maybe needs to go.
We will correct that?
Thank you.
Manny?
Yes, when you're talking about infrastructure, to bypass the infrastructure in that part, is that you're talking about sewer and water?
Everything underground.
Everything underground?
Everything below 18 inches. Right now, we're trying to get the currents from the state to go 18 inches because they won't let us go, they won't let us do anything right now.
No, not...
So we're trying to go 18 inches and do the widening of the road with the drains where they are and everything run the way it is until 10, 15, 20 years down the road when the federal government finally says it's been mitigated and we can go in and get it.
Couple of years ago, the council decided we would prefer to go ahead and do the over...
The widening and laying it out.
And at least get that so that it looks nicer.
Sidewalks and everything gutter because we'll be allowed to go 18 inches down as long as the state, rather than, that's what we're waiting on, guys, is the state to say, with the federal government, to say, go.
And new, the surface and the sidewalks and the lighting and all that will be new, just like the new pavement over there. But the reason we wanted to do that is, it could be 20 years before that thing is ready to address the sewer and the water and all that. So we wanted to just go ahead and put a top on it. We'll open it up when we get...
There you go. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. More correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're expecting the sample, expecting to find out soon from what I understand.
It's been about three months ago, I believe, I signed a task order for some sampling, but I noticed...
They were down there cutting samples.
CH2M, that was through our WH Pacific, but I noticed CH2M was doing sampling just a week or so, so we might be able to just piggyback off of their sample.
Yeah, that's what I understand what you're doing.
What they're gonna do is, okay.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to extend this funding.
Yes. Yeah, I'll motion to extend the...
Resolution 171566, approval of extension funding. Second.
I second.
Thank you. Sidney?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Cool. Thank you. Next one.
Okay, similar, in front of you is a resolution requesting an extension for funding, and this is for the Riverwalk Trail Project. The state reminded me this week that we need to stop using the term legacy trail that we use because the official language is the Riverwalk Trail Project. Anyway...
That changes to Legacy Trail Project?
No, it's the Riverwalk. The legacy's wrong. So they asked that I start using Riverwalk Trail Project. So anyway, there were some right-of-way issues. Again, unfair to you, I know some of here, but I know there's some right-of-way issues, and I know they turned in the final maps this past Friday. So again, we are expecting this issue that's caused the extension request, we're expecting it to be resolved soon. The final map was turned in Friday to DOT. Again, this project was ending September 31st this month, and we're asking for a one-year extension. And so there's a new timetable in your packet. It'll be complete by next summer, late next summer.
And that trail is part of the 20-year coverage of our future. Actually, it's been around there for a couple times, too. Remember when I did it, and now when Sidney and Manny did it?
Where's that trail stored?
I can't remember. Riverwalk, it goes all the way down to Futures. Adventure.
Adventure.
Adventure. It's gonna go to Adrenin, that space.
That was the first phase in there?
Yeah. It'll go to Adrenin, this space, which will be nice. Questions? Sidney? Manny?
No.
Rick?
Nope.
Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the request for extension of time, hold him 61, Delwell, 983, Riverwalk Trail Project.
Second.
Okay.
Sidney?
No.
Manny?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're a cherry. Should I go bring my dog out here to see how he'll behave with those dogs?
He was already barking.
When he heard that one, barked at East, though.
He was barking.
That's all I needed. That's all I needed. Oh, my God. Sarah, close.
Mayor, um, City Manager. Thank you for allowing us to...
Hold that right up there so you can get on the record nice and clear there, Cherry. Thank you. This is the first time we've had you here. So, we wanna make sure we hear you.
Thank you for allowing us to, uh, help you give your presentation. The care center is an open door facility, and we accept animals from the city, county. We go to animal control, uh, the Acumen Conservation Officers, and my mom. We don't charge owner surrender fees. Um, we already find animals dumped in bridges, mothers of pups in boxes, cats and kittens. And if we charge, we find more dumped animals. It's very sad. We house on an average seventy-five to a hundred, depending on the intake, the reason why. The month of August, there was a hundred and thirty-nine unreleased animals. Reasons as far as people, my dog pees on my tires. Hoarding situations. They can't afford to feed them. We're moving. I'm not dealing with this. This is Joy. I don't know if everybody can see her, but this is little Joy. That is why she was unreleased. She came in with eight puppies, and her owner said, "I'm not dealing with this." It's their fault she got pregnant. It's very sad.
We still have the spay neuter program going on, right?
Yes, we do, we do. The city provides a twenty-five dollar coupon.
Yeah.
And, and there's help out there. We're currently working on, um, searching for grants for the spay neuter programs, for education. If the community was more educated, it would, it would really help us.
We gotta remember that cute little puppies grow up to be dogs.
Yes, yes.
That's what they, yeah.
And they need good, loving homes. We're also researching grants for just helping people in the community. There's so many people that have pets, the seniors. They get to where they can't take care of their pets. Family members come in and they bring us their animals because they don't wanna take care of them. There's programs out there to help the seniors so they can keep their pets, and a lot of seniors, that's what keeps them going, is their loved friends. In August, we transported forty-five dogs and puppies. Some went to Ogden, Utah, the New Beginnings Rescue Pack in Pounds, Rio Rancho, the All-American Copper Rescue. They came a lot of copper spend from the city, went on to Colorado Springs. And we transported, um, hound puppies to the Circle El Ranch in Prescott Valley. There's wonderful people out there, not just in our area, but all over. They're willing to give all these animals that we take in homes. We recently received a band that's been sitting for a few years to help with the transports. Thank you, Chris. It's gonna be a blessing when we can load that and take fifty-plus animals. We have a foster program. All the animals transported need to be in a foster home for fourteen or more days. That's basic protocol per rescue, um, to cut down on diseases. The puppies, they, they go with three vaccines, the adults are vaccinated, against the probably the distemper and the portital, which is cannot cough. And if anybody's interested in fostering, please come by the care center, we'd be happy to kind of what needs to happen. Sometimes you have them longer than fourteen days. Like five or six weeks and you get really attached and don't wanna give them up. But yeah, they, they wrap around your heart. We have a lot of volunteer programs that when the kids come in and walk the dogs, the kids come after school, we do goat trips, Girl Scouts, the Anker Club. We even had the Los Alamitos Art Class come and, um, the kids were sketching out dogs, cats. It's a fun place to be, it's not always sad. The dogs are happy, they have beds, blankets, toys, treats. The community, they, the Girl Scouts, even the schools, they donate a lot of cookies and treats and toys for the animals, so it's, um, it's really wonderful. Um, the city's doing great things, and I'm happy to be a part of that, thank you. I have a wonderful crew. We have Cameron Townley and Cassandra Camler, my animal control officers. Jackie Gardner is my green screen secretary, and Arda Bustos is my kennel maintenance.
Questions? Sidney?
Is there any way to make the shelter, to expand the area available to the shelter?
The only way would be possible, we'd go towards the back of the baseball cars, where they park on that back park. Danny Almonte's church owns the property. And actually, we're encroached on that little way, and we have to pay it for it. Don't ask me how it got built, like that.
I don't wanna know.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate that.
Manny? Any questions?
Sherry, I think you're doing a great job. Thank you, I see you all over town driving around. I know you don't sit around, and even when you're there, when I come to visit you, I know that you're always working during something. Manny, do the plate.
Rick? Mike?
Just a comment. You guys have a beautiful facility, and every time I go out there, it's really nice and clean, and the people are friendly. Proud to say I'm a rescue dog owner. Every time people compliment our dog, they tell them we got him at the resc- at the rescue center. And, uh, we're, we're real proud of our facility.
I've had to put a couple of dogs down here the last couple of years, and Sherry has been actually a lifesaver for my family because it's hard to do. I was looking at this report, Sherry, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
August, hundred and eighty-six euthanizations.
So we have.
Hundred and three in July, and eighty-five in June.
So the month of August, we had sixty-four, sixty-seven cats and kittens come from a hoarding situation.
Oh, my God.
Here in City Minus. It happened about three years ago, and we thought we had.
I remember that one.
Corrected the problem while she let it happen again, and most of them were feral. We ended up with one officer being bit by a feral cat. It was, they were all sick.
That explains it.
Hamidipenia, scabies, ringworm, uh, we all ended up with ringworm.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah, and so they were all euthanized, they were very sick. Some of them we held for a couple of days because we weren't sure if they actually came from that household because we were tracking, not only just going in and using protective equipment and capturing them, but some of them looked like they were, could've gone to neighbors. And there was several neighbors that had cats missing, but with the description that they gave us, we, they were cats that we picked up. And this went on for probably about three weeks. She's still bringing in some, that, that's how many.
That explains it, I knew there had to be an explanation, I appreciate it.
We worked with code enforcement also on this.
Yes.
There's a lot of, uh, people in the community on releases requesting you can because it is cheaper to come to the care center to.
Yeah, I can go to the, to the vet.
Heads.
How do you keep this person from allowing that to happen again?
Oh, my God. It's twice in, twice in five years.
I think they were going to, um, close charges that was probably.
File this time, right.
And, uh, do their pending, or how else if they, uh, other situations.
Thank you very much. You guys are doing a great job, thank you, guys. You're appreciated. Uh, I'll let you guys get a chance to read the professional service contract with economic development. Any questions, Laura? No questions? Does anybody wanna make a motion at this?
I make a motion. To keep funding the professional service agreement.
At forty-four thousand dollars.
At forty-four thousand dollars. An equal monthly installment of three thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Second?
I second.
Councilor Reynolds?
Yes.
Ms. Lucas?
Yes.
Ms. Lucero? Ms. Lewis? No. Main Street, MOU.
So, having the happen in MOU that we typically passed the Main Street and the Seaweed, they brought the resolution as well. Um, the mayor asked me to hold that since it wasn't in the package or on the agenda.
It wasn't on the agenda, so we pulled the resolution, guys. Okay? We have to. By opening these acts. Guys, got any questions on MOU, though?
I, um, I had brought up, um, to the mayor, and I may have talked to one or two of you, but I was, as we look at how we're gonna handle that seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar drawback of grocery seeds tax, I'm gonna be going through our budgets, I started today working on that, and just seeing where we can trim a little bit here or there and have the least amount of impact. I was kind of wondering with the Main Street contract, um, they don't have a director on board as of yet, and they haven't had a director for a while, and I didn't know if, um, we wanted to trim some of the funding that we typically had for them. This MOU is not tied to funding, although it does have components in it that talk about, I think on page two, it talks about typically that funding is, is then tied to it eventually in a contract. So I didn't know how the council felt, and, um, I feel like if I'm gonna be pulling a little bit back from each of my departments, that we should also pull a little bit back from these nonprofits that we're funding. And if we spread it among everybody, it'll have a less effect on each one.
And they're not, and they don't have a director, they're not paying a salary to the director, so.
Right.
Are they trying to hire a director?
Yes, they advertised, they advertised, and I believe they offered the position to an individual, and he wasn't gonna be available to December, till December, and so they decided to repost it, and it's, it's being posted right now with interviews scheduled soon.
Yeah, we've got the free interview scheduled for later this week, and so we hope to have somebody on board very soon. Like I said, the one candidate that we thought would be a good fit wasn't able to come to the position till December, so we reopened it right away and have four, four good candidates that we're looking at, so.
Right now, um, in the budget, we have them scheduled to receive forty thousand dollars, and I did notice, um, in some of the documentation that they require, the state requires at least thirty-five thousand, I believe, in order to keep their Main Street designation at the state level.
Has the directorship been empty since Mr. Morgan left?
Or, it was Ashley Gagels, right?
Yes. And, and we had an interim, or assistant till the end of July, and she went back to school, so we haven't had a, anybody in the position for the last month or in the office, but we are working on that.
So how do, how do you feel, Josephine, of taking a cut of five thousand dollars? Or, from forty to thirty-five?
We'll deal with it. I mean, we've got some fundraising plans going, we're still working on projects, and you know, everybody has to tighten up.
Well, I, I really would like to see us under thirty-five thousand dollars instead of the forty thousand, and that'll be a cut on it, until, hopefully until you can get a good director, and you have some more money coming in and, and bring, bring back, uh, some kind of presentation, what you're doing, what's going on.
Okay.
Laura's already voted on the budget, right?
Right, and so.
Can you control that?
Budget adjustment?
Yes.
Back off five thousand dollars?
Yeah, probably in the next couple of meetings, I'll come with the recommendation of where we're gonna trim to try and account for that.
It'll be a budget reconciliation because of what happened with the grocery seeds tax, and, and we'll do them all at once, instead of spreading them out, we'll just do them all at one time.
So right now, you have an MOU agreement, and it doesn't specify any budget amounts, but just.
So you guys know you're getting cut by, by Brett?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll have that in the contract at our next meeting in two weeks.
And from what I understand, you guys have an event coming up in December. Are you gonna come up and ask for money to do the Princess Life Parade?
Uh, no, we are planning on fundraising for that, we've always
You go, girl.
Used our own funds.
You go.
And, uh, we're assisting still with the Oktoberfest, it's been scaled down greatly because we only have ten thousand in lodgers tax, and we're gonna mainly be using that for advertising next year of our three-day event. It came out fairly successful, and that we continue to hope to grow that.
So, let's go.
I make a motion.
Make a motion for, yeah, I know, make a motion for the MOU without the money.
Okay, I make a motion for the MOU, um, five thousand reduction from your budget.
Second?
I second.
Sidney?
Yes.
Manny?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
So Josephine, should we get the resolution on for the next meeting? Yes, please. Thank you very much.
Come on up, Kim, I wanna see you talk, girl. You are doing a great job out there, I want you to know that. Okay? I want you to hear that from us up here, Rick even said you're doing a good job. He's a golfer, so he would know.
Thank you.
Okay? Talk to us, number ten sprinkler controllers for the draw course.
We're looking at replacing some of our irrigation systems. These control, we can run at least a hundred sprinklers from one controller, which, our old ones are twenty, but twenty years old, so they're running out of parts. So what we're doing is, the six we replace, we've replaced six of them, I believe, May. And we saved those parts, and the other ones that broke down, we replaced them with whatever we could salvage. We're trying to do the same also.
How many more sets do we need? We did one last year, this one, and?
I believe we need two more phases.
Two more, after this one?
Yes. And I'd like to do it now in the fall, so that when spring comes and we start our seasons up, and we start to water, everything's going.
Questions? Sidney? Manny? Rick? Mike? I'll take a motion.
A motion to approve these sprinkler system controllers for forty-eight thousand, five, twenty-nine.
Second? Sidney?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
Don't let my grass die.
I got a question for Kim.
Absolutely not.
Are you still working on the, uh, equipment that we need out there for the rough mower and car wash?
Right now, we do need a rough mower. I had to send it in to Spencer's today, because it just looked like a big ball of fire today. Uh, what we're using is a zero-turn, um, mower. It's a small mower to handle our, our buff. Takes roughly two days each side to mow, but it's taken us a little bit longer because on one side, we'll have to use that smaller mower.
How old is that mower that you just took in?
Oh, it was purchased in two thousand and four. It's gone here.
I think it's used its life.
Had a good run, but we're getting, we're working on it.
We need to get that one, make sure that for next time, if we can see a lot of the, uh, reason to put it on there.
You know, we might have to wait till we put the golf carts.
Yes.
And we need some kind of a budget revision on that?
We're needing to get the golf cart.
Next year, we're gonna find golf carts on. I mean, we've been through three sets of batteries, now, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Now, we got the controllers that are ranking on them.
You got, you got your, your mower that are twenty years old, you got the cars that are almost nine years old.
I was hoping to get twelve out of them, Rick, I'm only gonna get ten, dude.
Yeah, well.
So I'll work with the staff and see what we might need.
See what you can come up with.
Yeah.
Is that all you got?
That's all I got, thank you.
You're good?
Thanks, Kim.
Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next you got there in your packet is just, those are just notices for the next board meeting, and we'll, uh, at that point, we'll do a lot of work. Yeah, exactly. Comments for the council, Sidney?
I have one. It's about these speed humps. Are they getting higher? You know, I, I do, you know, I, I meant
One cars.
About the people, the person driving the Prius. Priuses are really low. And I, I go down, I went down, um, Truman and Balsam, you know, in my car, I stop now in front of those two on, on the Truman, and then I stop on the Balsam one, too. And I'm not, I'm in a, not a low car. So I'm just getting higher.
I asked, um, I asked the street department if they would evaluate those. Um, somebody recommended that they needed to have a, more of a gradual tapering to them. So I asked them to look at them. Um, other people have said, "No, they're the same as the other ones that we have out," but.
What was it out?
Nathan's here, you might wanna ask.
Yeah.
The perfect example of a good speed bumps are the ones on Mount Taylor Avenue, going towards the dog pound.
Be where you're expanding from global warming.
No, she's not, she's not a speeder, and, and she's just having a really hard time carrying a Prius.
Let's see what we.
Nathan, what, what did you guys think? Did you look at those and see if we need to taper them more, or? What's your thoughts on the speed hump on Balsam and the two new ones on Truman? Uh, people are saying they're too abrupt.
Uh, we go, we said there was a lot of hurt combined. Uh, we had a couple issues on people, the driving we put up, uh, Scott and Flor Addison constantly sped up and that went just to hit them and wrecked their cars, so we wouldn't put in there. Uh, we said there was a lot of cars go slow, from even the Priuses and the, uh, the smaller cars, and they still had a good three, four-inch gap when they extended the back speed bump, they wanted to go further. And they might. And they might, you know, speed bumps are made, supposed to make you slow down. So if you go slow over, you're not going to scrap, dig that, wreck the vehicle. And I was always told that you shouldn't be able to go 35 or speed hump. What's the point of a speed hump? In my opinion, a speed hump, you go up to, you're almost going to stop before you go over, before you take off again. That's how, I've been 20 months and I've watched cars go over and nobody's shown. Lots that are having a problem with your mower. You must focus on how you're going to do.
That's, yeah, that might be where they are. Maybe you take them a little bit.
I don't know. What's a Prius?
I'll take some of that. I'll take some of that.
Nathan, the question was, is there a standard height and width?
It's rated four inches.
It's seven feet wide and the width that they wear, I believe, is four or five inches in, again, from zero to about four or five inches in back. And they might, maybe they're on market.
Okay, so Nathan, let's look it up, Nathan, and see if they need some adjustments.
Yeah, the ones on Mount Taylor seem to be perfect in my opinion as far as the width and going over.
I hope you know, I can be all those starting tomorrow or Wednesday.
Thank you. Anything else besides a Prius?
Yes, I have something for the city council. I have a challenge for the city council on the cheerleading fest that's coming up. We need about, or sponsors, to sponsor a couple of events. I volunteer to do two events at $25 each, I'm jealous of the city council, but some of the $50.
Do we have to be in attendance?
You'd have $100 for you. No, no, it's on us. Yes, no, you don't have to be in attendance. This is just, this is just our sponsorship. Are you offering $50? Rick? Mike?
I accept your challenge.
Exactly. Thank you. I'm going to eat you the chili.
Rick? Comments? Mike?
Congratulations to Laura. She was nominated and won a champion award from COG, from the council of government serving on our region. One or two champions of our area.
Thanks.
We just got notice today that we applied for some technical assistance on developing trails on Mount Taylor called the Grants Ridge Trail. And so Attila Ballantyne out of the National Park Service is going to be coming and helping facilitate some community focus groups and things to start working on a plan, a comprehensive plan for trails in our area. So that's great news. And then the council received a thank you message from the Historic Society, Sebola County Historic Society, for the support that we've given to the Airway Heritage Museum that's next to our airport. So I just wanted to let you know, we received a thank you. We've helped refurbish that building and various things and it's looking good, so...
They're playing golf all day. They need some volunteers to scrape some of the window panes out there. Who plays golf all day?
Here, bud, I'll get you retired if you should. Here, bud.
Don't have the time.
The council, also one more thing. The council all received a letter from Judge Larson regarding, requesting that we change our charter and take away term limits. But we did do a revision to the charter in March of 2016. I put together a committee that helped work on it and we did make a few minor changes, but the committee was very adamant that we leave in term limits. And I think, you know, in the past, we had a couple of individuals in the last three or four years that tried to run for a third term and they were not elected. And that said to me that our citizens want term limits. And so I believe, you know, there was a case in Albuquerque where the Supreme Court said that it wasn't constitutional to set term limits, but my recommendation is that we leave them in our charter and I think our citizens want term limits.
And here's one thing about that, too, on those term limits. The first time we did the charter with the home rule, we had two charters for the people to vote on. One had terms limits in it, one didn't have term limits in it. And the one that passed hands down was the one that had term limits in it. That's why they're in it. And personally, as a mayor, as a city council that served two terms, if you can't get done what you want to get done in eight years, you got no business sitting up here anyway. Okay? I mean, term limits are a good thing because they keep fresh minds, fresh ideas every four to eight years, guys. And I mean, for us to change that, especially after we just passed it and people just voted on it, I want no part of it, guys.
Do you know why she sent this letter? Did somebody...
She, her term's over. And so I don't know if she's interested in running a third year. Even if we worked on it now, it still wouldn't be an effective time for her to, but I'm guessing that's her interest.
I think there was challenge before by Mr. Hottemeyer.
And it never made it into court.
Never made it into court.
Never made it into court.
We need to leave it alone.
You know, so, I mean, we leave it alone and if she runs and wins, then we would have to do something. But I mean, she took an oath to uphold that charter. And the charter says you get a term limit. You can come back and run after four years, but you got to take a break after eight years, guys, unless you're a counselor going to mayor or a mayor going to counselor. Period. So, and I think term limits are a good thing. Once again, I honestly believe in them. Look at Washington and San Antonio. That's the problem is there's no term limits. They just get there and they become embedded and they all do nothing. Fight with each other because there's no new ideas. Okay? That's all you had? I've got something less. You need to hear this, probably. We've got properties where we're dumping our road stuff and we're dumping our stuff out of the ditches, okay? Like for instance, Ronnie Pines property, this property down here next to the church. And we're cleaning those properties and we have no agreements with anybody to do these things. Okay? So what I think when you do is just a basic agreement that you allow us to put our street stuff here till it dries, till we haul it off, we'll scrape your lot. Okay? And that will be the agreement for the private-public partnership. Because I'm getting calls now on this property right down here at the bottom of the hill below, Ray's lawn, the top, where we dump our stuff. And I don't, you know...
I don't think we're dumping anymore. We haven't noticed any.
There was some there just, what, two weeks ago? And they picked it up. But my point being is, is if we're going to, I mean, just related to Ronnie Pines, we've got to dump it on his property every time we go down the ditch. Okay? Period. So let's take it on our, put the dirt there. We go to pick the dirt up, have the tractor scrape the weeds.
I think that's a great idea.
You know, and that way, if we do it with, say, this property down here, the school foundation has a property across the street. Somebody else might have a property down here like that one that's right behind First Street that could actually be used for part of the high school parking lot, you know? So we dump some stuff there and then it looks so much better too when we have people come into our town. And all we do is every time we dig in the street, we pick a new lot. And we have eight or 10 of these private-public partnerships. So this not needs cleaned out this week, we dump the stuff on that lot. And then we pick it up and it dries, we scrape it. So, I mean, seems like a great idea to me and it'll help keep the weeds down and help our town look better. And it's basically an agreement that we'll clean the lot if you let us put our trash here for a couple of weeks while it dries. Okay? So once we get rolling on that, that gives me a thumbs up, we'll bring that back to the council and see where we're at. Okay? I mean, and that's, that's what I had. I had Laura's deal that you covered and I had the duty here. So that's it. I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
Motion to close the meeting?
Second?
Second.
If I may say, I...
Aye.
Have a good night. Thanks, guys. Thank you very much for your time.
So much to see and do in Grants. Parks provide relaxation for picnics and athletic events. Creative activities abound at the Senior Citizen Center. The new animal shelter is a state-of-the-art facility for our lost pets. Grants is home to the Mount Taylor Quad, Fire Nice Bike Rally, Fourth of July Rodeo, and so much more. Grants, the gateway to outdoor adventures, sightseeing, hunting, hiking, biking, and riding. Grants, where ancient and modern civilizations meet. Grants, a great place to live.